Okay, I'd like to call the council back to action, please. We are moving to the action item number one, which is item number 12. Consider the recommended operating and capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Adoption of the operating and capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, established by the appropriation limit and related actions. There are quite a few recommended actions, so I'm going to read all of them. I'd like to have a stat report first.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for joining us today as we present the fiscal year 2023, 2024 proposed budget. In this presentation, we will discuss the changes since the proposed budget was printed on May 5th and outline the next steps in the budget cycle. To assist us, department directors are present and ready to address any questions you may To ensure the budget aligns with the community's desires and priorities, city staff conducted a community budget survey and hosted a series of budget outreach events. As you can see from this slide, budget outreach was conducted at festivals, farmers markets, and the library to encourage community participation and gather direct feedback. In addition, the city conducted a community budget survey. The survey opened on April 20th and closed on May 31st. We received 1,090 responses, up from 727 responses when we last shared the results with you on May 17th. This slide provides the questions for your reference, and now I'll share the results of the survey. We first asked the community what they wanted to cut. We learned that the majority of the community, out of the options, would like to reduce funding for citywide events and recreation classes. The second question we asked was what the community did not want to cut, and the community felt strongest about preserving funding for law enforcement, followed by street maintenance and park maintenance. And finally, we inquired about community preferences for revenue generation opportunities. Among the three options presented, the community expressed the highest level of interest in increasing fees. I'll just want to note that an updated fee schedule with adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, will be presented to council in July. Additionally, a comprehensive fee study is currently underway and will be presented to council later this year. Overall, the survey responses indicate that the community's priorities are in line of the proposed budget presented by staff. Now I'll be discussing the changes to the proposed budget since it was presented, printed on May 5th. To begin, let's review the components that make up the proposed budget. Over the past few months, the city council has held meetings and study sessions to review and provide direction on the city work program, Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, and operating budget. The budget you see today incorporates the city council's direction from these meetings and study sessions. Additionally, on May 18th, the city hosted a community budget town hall to gather input from the community. Now let's highlight the changes that have occurred since the proposed budget was printed. The proposed budget initially recommended expenses of $117.8 million. However, the proposed budget has decreased by $100,000 due to operating changes, as well as increased by $4.1 million due to the capital improvement program projects, as well as transfers from the capital reserve. And as of June 6th, the proposed budget now stands at $121.7 million. On this slide, we see the changes by fund type. General fund expenditures are decreasing by $315,000 from the May 5 proposed budget and are now at $86 million. Moving on to the financial overview by fund, we can see the revenues, expenditures, and fund balance by fund. In the general fund, expenditures are $86 million, funded by revenues of $80.4 million, and fund balance of $5.6 million. When considering all funds, total expenditures reach $121.7 million, which is supported by revenues of $110.3 million, and $11.4 million in fund balance. Now let's dive into more detail regarding the changes that have occurred. First, community grant funding and movies in the park, which had been reduced in the proposed budget, have been restored through a city council straw poll at the proposed budget study session on May 17th. Community grant funding would increase by $8,000 to $32,500 in total. In addition, we would add $8,380 for movies in the park for part-time staffing and materials costs. The other items on this list are changes that came up after the budget was printed on May 5th. The city manager's office is requesting to reclassify the emergency services coordinator as assistant to the city manager with the working title of emergency manager. Salaries and benefits for the increase are $28,784. In addition, the city staff is requesting $4,720 for environmental health permit fees because starting in fiscal year 23, 24, the city will be charged permit fees for fruits, facilities, and pools by the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health. The next item is regarding the elimination of festival fee waivers. This was initially proposed by staff as a potential revenue source. However, city staff has identified alternative cost-saving measures, such as prepaying the unfunded accrued liability, or UAL, to save $154,000, as well as eliminating library extra hours funding to save $160,000. So taking these savings into account, staff suggests removing item I from the recommended action. It's important to note that relying on anticipated revenue from festival fees is not a fault risk, as there is no guarantee that the expected revenue will materialize. In addition, if festival fees are not waived, some festivals may become financially unviable, potentially leading to the cancellation of some of them. As a result, staff recommends removing the elimination of festival fee waivers, item I, from the recommended action. And so this would cross out this line item that we have on the screen. Next, as part of a cost-saving initiative, the admin services department requests to make a lump sum prepayment towards the CalPERS pension plan unfunded accrued liability. The unfunded accrued liability is the difference between the pension plan's assets and liabilities, and by prepaying, the city will save 3.4% in interest, equivalent to $154,149. Library extra hours is also being eliminated, as the Santa Clara County Library District confirmed on May 18th that the city will not be charged for extra hours in fiscal year 23, 24. This would save the city $160,000 in one-time funding. Next, the public works department proposes transferring the budget for golf course turf maintenance to the Blackberry Farm Fund and increasing the amount to $225,000 in line of the contract. Moving on to the other funds, Senate Bill 1, also known as gas tax, revenue estimates are being adjusted by $313,000 to the line of state projections. The city expects to receive $1.4 million in SP1 revenues, which are dependent on overall state gas consumption. Taking all these operating changes into account, total expenses will decrease by $118,000, while total revenues will increase by $398,000. In total, fund balance will increase by $515,000. This slide shows the capital improvement program, which was presented to you by Director Mosley on May 17th. The capital improvement program budget itself is $2.027 million. In addition, $2.027 million is also being transferred from the capital reserve to the capital improvement program fund, bringing the total to $4.1 million. Transfers from the capital reserve are made every year in order to fund capital projects. Next, let's outline the next steps in the budget cycle. Our plan is to publish the adopted budget by the end of July. Subsequently, we will present the first quarter report to the city council in November. This report will provide updates on the year-end results for the current fiscal year and the first quarter results for the next fiscal year. We have also included in your agenda packet Attachment G, which provides responses to city council's questions from the May 17th study session. In addition, the supplemental report provides responses to council questions that we received before tonight's meeting. It also includes a list of teen and senior programs that are being cut, as well as ones that aren't being cut. The city will be continuing the teen volunteer fair and Bobotino through other events. Staff will be working with the youth activity board and teen commission to offer the most interesting and needed events as programs for teens. We appreciate your attention, and now welcome any questions and comments you may have. Thank you for your time and participation.
Thank you, Thomas, and I'd like to open this for council for five-minute question and answering. I believe we have asked a lot of questions, but I do have a couple of extra questions to ask, but I'll let our other council members to go first. If not, can I ask my two questions first? My first question is, I do understand when we talk about Shakespeare in the Park, Park and Recreation Director Rochelle did say that it's not in the budget, but the city will support fundraising to make sure it functions this summer. Is that a correct assumption? Sorry, Rochelle. So when you're working on, my question is, if Shakespeare in the Park is unable to fundraise the amount, and I'm not sure how much it is, around $30,000? That's my guess, but you can tell me the exact amount, what would happen?
So I believe the city manager expressed this at the last meeting, but yes, if they are not able to fundraise the full $30,000, then we will be able to cover the extras so that it will happen this summer.
Okay, so is that a, can I add a contingency to that to make sure, or we have extra funding somewhere that we are able to put in there? Or does council need to come, you need to kind of come back and ask the council for approval?
Through the mayor, I believe that we will be able to locate a sufficient funding for this year.
Okay, so that's my first question. My second question, I understand you have removed item number I for the fee waivers from all the festivals. I really like that, and I do believe those nonprofits who are trying to do the festivals is a big sum of money. I was trying to find the attachment D. What is the sheriff's total that we cut? Is it around $40,000, I would say? Sorry, I was trying to find that document, I couldn't. I think it's around $40,000. So my question is, I would like to rethink that, but anyway, I'm going to ask other people to ask questions. Other council members, please pitch your questions. If no hands, I'll, okay, go ahead.
So just to piggyback off of the last question, it's not clear to me that I has actually been removed. I hear you saying that it is no longer staff's recommendation that we move forward with I, but it does still appear in the recommended action. So would we, in the course of a motion, have to proactively strike item 1I?
Through the mayor, that'll be correct.
Any other questions? If not, I would, go ahead. Vice Mayor Moore.
I'd run quick question. G is the new revenues, the $154,149. That's something that we hadn't discussed, right? That's a new action that, or recommendation that you're making.
Yes, that's correct.
So from last time to, from the last discussion to today, then we have additional revenues of $154,149. And how, no, no, I'm talking about G, $154,149, is the prepayment amount. So that is something we can count on every year, right? If you do it exactly like you did this year?
Yes.
And so this was not something you considered in previous years because there was no need?
It was not. In previous years, it was more important to maintain local control of the dollars as opposed to putting them into CalPERS. Once they're in CalPERS, CalPERS invests them. If the city is able to keep more dollars on, we can invest them within our funds instead. So the goal in prior years was more local control. This year, as we're looking to find ways to reduce our expenses, we thought this was a better option for the city.
And would they allow us to go back to the old way next year, or are we committed to doing it this way?
Correct. We decide every year we have the option to either continue to pay it monthly or to do the prepayment amount.
Okay, thank you.
And through the mayor, we do have the sheriff's dollar amount available for you.
So the original amount was $36,492. That does include $1,500 that isn't sheriff's costs, it's material costs for the Veterans Day Festival.
Thank you. The council questions, I'll open up for public, oh, council member Moore, please.
Quick question, with regards to Attachment D, the reclassification of the emergency services coordinator. Would you happen to know what increase that is from? What's the base amount? And then you're adding the $28,784. I'm going to assume that that's basically a raise for this individual. Is that right? And what did they start at and what will they finish at with this?
Yes, so we're trying to pull up that information to speak, but this would be a raise for the individual.
Okay, one more, yes, please.
I thought that when we were discussing movies in the park, it was $3,000, and now I'm seeing it at $8,380. Is that just a little adjustment that needed to happen there?
The $3,000 initially was only the materials, but this includes the materials as well as the part-time staffing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And regarding the emergency services coordinator, so including salaries and benefits, the initial compensation was $255,000, but now it'll be moving up to $284,000. And that includes salaries and benefits.
If there are no more questions, I'd like to open up the public comment, please. Do we have cards? Thank you.
Yes, mayor, we have four speaker cards in community hall, and there's a couple additional in the box. And then we have one hand raised on Zoom so far. So first speaker is Alyssa Sakis, followed by Fran Ellis. Actually, so this is a request, Fran Ellis is requesting to cede their time to Alyssa Sakis. However, I don't believe we have that provision in the council rules. There is either three minutes allowance or five speakers for 10 minutes. So if you happen to have two additional people that would like to cede their time.
If the council are okay with it, Alyssa, how many minutes do you?
I think I'll be fine with the three minutes. I wasn't sure if it might get decreased to two, so.
Okay, thank you.
But it looks like you have four people.
Okay. Thank you.
So you have 10 minutes then.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, city council and city staff. My name's Alyssa Sakis. I'm the president of Cupertino-Toyocoua Sister Cities. We call ourselves CTSC. And with me, I have some members of my board and committee, Jean Gasparini, secretary, Gilbert Wong, committee, Gary McHugh is on the committee, and Fran Ellis is our CFO. So we were very happy to hear that you removed, the recommendation is to remove 1I, just wanted to speak to that a little bit. We really want to urge you to continue to support the free waivers for festivals, for the annual Cupertino Cherry Blossom Festival, and other worthwhile festivals in our city. CTSC is an all-volunteer nonprofit organization that works very hard to nurture the city of Cupertino's sister city relationship with Toyocoua, Japan, for the benefit of the city and the community. Besides honoring the city's relationship with Toyocoua and sharing Japanese culture with the community, it is the sole raiser for our programming. And these funds are used for various things, the expenses for our student exchange, which allows us to send CUSD teachers and offers scholarships to students for those whom otherwise there would be a financial barrier to their participation. We also use the funds for expenses for hosting an adult exchange every five years, and other activities such as our annual community bell ringing for world peace event. Without the waivers of the fees for our festival, we may be forced to make the difficult decision not to hold the festival, because frankly, looking at the numbers, we might not, in a bad year, might not even be able to cover all these expenses with a break even to provide the community with this benefit, much less being a fundraiser for the items that I explained. Our beloved festival has garnered a lot of awards. This year, we received the top award of best festival from the Mercury News, Metro Magazine, and the Bay Area Parent Magazine. And these accolades speak well for the city of Cupertino. We draw an audience from all over the San Francisco Bay Area, and even as far as the LA area. We have attendance from elected officials and the consulate of Japan. And I'd like to point out, as was mentioned, that indeed, the analysis of saying that charging festival fees would bring in revenue of $84,000-plus was faulty, because with these fees, I really think the city would have priced themselves out, and I know that we might not be able to even conduct this festival, and some of the others would may not have been able to too. So we really appreciate the budget pressures, but continuing to waive these fees will help CTSC support the city of Cupertino's relationship with its sister city, a partnership that is celebrating its 45th anniversary this year. And CTSC very much values our partnership with the city, and we really hope that you will indeed make the right decision to remove item 1I from the budget report. So thank you very much. And I don't know if maybe Gary wanted to add, use a little bit more time, if there's some, he had some great points.
I don't want to waste your time. I know how that is. But I just wanted to point out, you know, it's more than just a sister city relationship. It's really a community relationship, and we try to offer something that's joyful to the community, also provides art appreciation and education. So it's really win all around, and it doesn't cost that much, in my opinion. So I hope you can see through to removing item I. Thank you.
Anyone else in that group?
Thank you very much.
You joined in, you still have five minutes. Anyone who want to say something, you can still say something. Okay, thank you, next, please.
Okay, so next we have Gary McHugh, followed by Orin Mahoney. Oh, okay, yes. So we have Orin Mahoney, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Orin Mahoney, 54-year resident of Cupertino, speaking kind of officially from the Rotary Club of Cupertino and its festival, but really for all the festivals. So I've been involved in Cupertino festivals for probably over 20 years, not just the Fall Festival, but DiVale, everything, every festival, and I've participated in Cupertino-sponsored activities. I've been Uncle Sam at 4th of July, and I've been, I hope all the kids are asleep by now, I've been Santa Claus at the tree lighting. So I've been out there for all the things. I want to start by saying that I'm not sure that you understand how tight the budgets are on all these festivals. And you heard a little bit on the Cherry Blossom Festival. None of them, in my opinion, would exist without help from sponsorships. That's how they make their money, otherwise they don't break even. We already have a challenge in this coming up year. I know I'll speak for Fall Festival now, where I've got the numbers. With the sheriff's change, you saw that was $34,000 overall, it's about $6,000 per festival, depending on the size of the festival, one or two days. So we're already taking that hit. And we did run the numbers, I ran the numbers this afternoon. We would, if we had the same festival as we did last year without any major changes, without the fee waiver, we would lose money. And we like to put on the festival, it's not just there to raise money, but it is there to raise money. And we're probably not, as basically a charitable organization, not there to provide a party for the city, even though that's what we do. So you would lose the festival, in particular for the Fall Festival, in addition to just the goodwill in the community and the fact the community likes to come out there. You may know that over the past many years, we've had the Health and Safety Zone there, where we have 10 city booths from all the different areas. That would go away, we wouldn't have that. We have the Environmental Zone, where we have a lot of nonprofits and climate and the other areas, that would all go away. And then, of course, the money that we do raise, which all goes to charitable events for the city, would go away. So I urge you to take the staff report and go take item I and take the fee waivers and put them back on. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Orin. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rota Frye.
Thank you, city council. Boy, this is always interesting when we're talking about budgets. You all have done a really great job of dealing with this. It's not fun to be during crunch times. I've worked at three startup companies of very, very tiny sizes, and when you do your rounds of venture capital, the second, the third, the fourth, and sometimes there's nothing left, and the company is either sold or it goes under. The city, therefore, will remain. The main thing is, don't panic. Things like this happen. The first question I have, and I'm going to go out on a limb here, is, we have an audit of Apple. Why is this happening? It is, I've talked to my husband and some other people about this. It is completely legitimate to have this type of tax infrastructure in California. Williams-Sonoma has the same setup with the city in Southern California, and there are several others. My question is, don't panic, is, let's wait until the state has finished their audit, two to three months, et cetera, and then we start coming back and asking the state. I really am concerned that the state might be squeezing Cupertino over other issues. I would hate to think that Cupertino is being harassed because of Housing Element, Apple, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's been a lot of dirt thrown at Cupertino from the state level, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I'm just going to put this out there, we don't know what started this audit. It may be just because of who Cupertino is and the fact that Apple is there. It is not illegal to have this type of structure. I have been told this by several people. So ask questions, file a report, and say, what's the deal here? You know, we're, I'm sorry, we are in a democracy, and we can ask questions. This state may operate like they have taken away all local control, but we are the public, and we get to ask questions, or we will remove people by valid elections who are doing things in this state that are untoward. I'm just throwing this out there. We don't know why this audit happened. Also, don't sell parkland. It is probably illegal to sell parkland. The Blackberry Farm was bought by Bond, people voted for it in 1990. I don't think that we can sell parkland unless you have a citywide election. Stabilize City Hall. You know, don't build a new one, stabilize the old one, and mentor employees, cross-train them and let them move into different positions. Thank you.
And next, we have Rota Frye.
Good evening. For those of you who want to better understand the CD-TFA audit, you'll get a lot of insight into it if you Google "Apple Cupertino Bloomberg Tax." That said, I urge you to not vote for this overly bloated budget today. We still have time to do it right. First and foremost, we need to have a line-by-line reconciliation of budgets to actual from the past three years. If we had those, then we would have known where we underestimated expenses and where we've overestimated. One notable area in overestimation was the anticipated library fees that were never owed to the county. Thanks for, to Council Member Moore for finding that with her brilliant analytical skills. From the budget presentation, the previous year's total actuals were around $80 million. Now we're at $117 million, and we're about to be dipping into savings for at least a decade. Please also consider that our going into savings is not as apparent now, because funds should have been put into long-term savings, and they were instead put into an unallocated fund, so our actually dip into savings appears to be lower. We've had a lot of headcount that was not filled in 2022, yet we've been told that we will have a reduction in services if we don't fund that headcount. But how bad was it for us residents when those jobs were not filled? Can we please understand? And I also want to thank staff very much for providing the written answers to city council members. The data on the city employment was especially helpful. And meanwhile, please, you know, many, many more jobs have been, are being allocated, and the city has been on a high
the city has been on a hiring spree. Headcount is one of our biggest cost centers and one of the hardest things to cut. We need to be more careful in our hiring. As far as on the revenue side, please consider a headcount tax and fix the City Hall instead of building a new one. We also have to be concerned about the cost of maintenance. And absolutely positively, Jennifer Griffin said, don't sell our properties, don't sell our water, and don't sell our parks. And we paid for those. We voted for them. We voted ourselves to tax ourselves to purchase the water and the parks directly. Don't sell them. Please, we've got to reduce this budget. If you're not willing to do it now, please agree to review the budget when we get a final decision from the CDTFA. I would also reiterate that there's been no information provided on how the city budget will be affected if we have to pay money back to the state, and that worries me. Thank you.
Thank you, Rota. And that is our final speaker in Community Hall, so we will move to Zoom. We have one hand raised. San R., welcome, San.
Hello, Mayor Wee, and Vice Mayor Mohan and the City Council. I wanted to ask from the prior hearing that we had on this topic, there were cuts made to janitorial services at city facilities that includes parks and library, I believe. I'd like to ask you to look into making sure that we do not cut back on janitorial services, which is a real concern from a health perspective. Coming out of three years of COVID-nineteen, we should be paying more attention to health and safety. I also am not clear on where we ended up on the law enforcement. As we've seen in various cities, these events have attracted unfortunate incidents that have impacted and had tragic consequences. And we request you to please keep public safety in mind and not cut back on law enforcement at our events. We want to make sure we enjoy our events safely and public safety is not up for cuts. I also want to bring back the topic of the allocation for the bounce houses at the various city events. At the last meeting, there were a number of cuts that were identified, most of them targeting some of the kids' programs, such as all the funding for the kids' activities, bounce houses, the, the funding for Bobatina and so on. I would request you to reevaluate all of the cuts that happened for our kids and teen events. It looks like a number of budget savings have been identified. It also looks like a number of cuts were forfeited in order to not have to cut those because the budget savings were identified. Please don't forget our kids and teens in this process. I know each of you individually, through your past actions, have shown a commitment to our kids and teens. We have two school board members, or former school board members on the dais. We have multiple members that have shown and continue to show engagement with our youth. Please don't leave them behind. The funding that we put into the senior center, we should be putting into our kids and teens. They're our future. The Cupertino Teen Center has been closed since COVID. I ask you to please respect that. And finally, please consider my earlier plea to purchase the Monobello School for less than two million dollars. Perhaps you can negotiate its USD, bring it down even further, and consider development of a city park at the beautiful scenic location of Monobello School. It'll be one of the most scenic city parks, not only for Cupertino, but for all of the cities to enjoy. Thank you for looking into funding for janitorial services, funding for the kids and teens events, making sure our bounce houses are not taken away, making sure our teen center is reopened. I also want to say the childcare at the sports center has also been closed since COVID-nineteen. But it looks like the kids are paying the price for all the cuts here.
Thank you, San. That was your time. And, and that, that was our final speaker who had their hand raised in time in the nine-minute smear.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Now, I'm going to bring back to the council for discussion. Each council has five minutes, so please raise your hand if you would like to open up the discussions. Councilmember Moore?
I just want to mention, I believe I heard the Monobello property mentioned again. I believe it is outside of our city limits, so I just want to see if staff can follow up on that. It's a great idea, but I don't think we own it, that, have the capability of buying it.
Through to Mayor, I, I do believe that we have verified that the property is located outside city limits.
Thank you. Any more discussions? I would like to ask staff, I do believe from the previous, our last study session to now, we have allocated a few more revenues, the reduction of one-hundred-and-fifty-four-one-four-nine, the library, one-sixty, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And there was another item, additional revenue of three-hundred-and-third, three-hundred-and-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen because of the update on SB one. So, that has been added back to the revenue part of it.
Sorry, so just a point, point of clarification. The additional revenue for SB one, that is additional revenue for the, the library hours and the CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability payment. That's a reduction in expenses.
Oh, okay. So, that actually is a reduction. So, the reduction of expenses, so it's not really revenue, but it's built into our new proposals. So, I, I don't know what my fellow council members think. I would really love to support our festivals and add back the thirty-six-thousand-four-ninety-two, the sheriff's expenses, because I do believe that's a great service. Festivals are a great service for our residents. I've been to almost every one of them every year. It's so well-attended, you know, families, kids, teenagers, all go. I really hate to, because of this, that we are unable to, or one or two unable to host it. So, that is my personal desire. And I do want to emphasize Shakespeare in the Park. I understand the thirty thousand, if it's not being raised, our city will be able to make it up, to make sure it happens this year, so next year we can go from there. But if I read their email correctly, they planned Shakespeare in the Park a year ahead of time. So, we almost have to commit to next year very soon if that's going to happen to us on next year's budget. And I don't know how long they, how, how far ahead they planned it, but my impression is they almost have to plan it now to get a commitment for next year. And I did know that San Jose stopped funding them a few years back and sounded, you're not in San Jose anymore. So, I would hate for our community to, to lose that. So, my other proposal is put the thirty thousand dollars this year and ask them to fundraise for next year. So, that's my two proposals. That means it's putting back another sixty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two as expenses. I'm just putting out there for my fellow council members to think about it, make comments. That is my ask right now. Thank you. My fellow council members, any thoughts? Please, pitching.
Yeah, so I, I understand where, where you're headed with regard to the sheriff's services. I'm, I'm just not quite entirely clear on what it is that, that you're asking for with respect to the Shakespeare in the Park.
I'm asking us to fund it this year, and they can start a fundraiser for next year. Because if I understand correctly, they are scheduling now for next year already. If they don't get a commitment from us from next year, they might just cancel it. That's what happened to San Jose and a couple of other cities. That would be my proposal, that we fund them this year and ask them to fundraise for next year.
Okay, so you're.
So, they can schedule us for next year. We don't lose it, for sure.
So, you're asking for certainty?
Yes.
Okay.
For next year, because this year, I know it will happen, because they're going to fundraise and our city have money. But I would like to commit to this year and ask the funding, they fundraise for next year, so they schedule us into next year. Else, I am afraid, Toby's not here to answer questions, I am afraid they might not schedule us next year if they don't get the guaranteed funding from the city or guaranteed fundraiser efforts from, from themselves. If I read their email correctly, that's my impression. I don't know if Orin can answer that question, because you read their emails too. Sorry, put you on the, just, just, because I know you're CC'd on that, too.
I was going to take a few minutes at the end of my time to say that I am working with Shakespeare on fundraising, and I think I've already secured five thousand dollars for this year. So, I'm not sure, you know, what I heard earlier was, it's a little bit like what happened with the library expansion, where the Library Foundation committed to raising a bunch of money, and they did raise a bunch of money, but the city said they would obviously backfill because the building was being built. So, what, what was proposed earlier sounded like a good start. If you want to go further than that, I'm not complaining, but, but I do feel, as I said earlier, the waivers and the sheriff's fees are very important for the festival. So, but we are, we're already working on Shakespeare to, to have them live up to their part of the bargain.
So, so my question actually is for, for Shakespeare in the Park, how, how far away they schedule festivals, their performances? If they, if I read their email correctly, they canceled San Jose years, years back because they couldn't commit to the funding for next year. So, I, I just don't know how much time we have.
So, through to Mayor, if I understand, the timing with the contract is that we usually start the contract conversation with Shakespeare's in the Park vendor earlier during the year. So, we have provided that certainty to them this year, given that it will take place during summer. So, that conversation took place in March and April earlier this year. So, if I understand you correctly, you would like to add funding back for twenty-twenty-four. And so, you would like Shakespeare's in the Park to start organizing fundraising for twenty-twenty-five. Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you. I have no more suggestions.
Yeah, I have one.
Councilmember Chow, and followed by Vice Mayor Mohan.
Yeah, I'll support Shakespeare in the Park. I think that has been like a Cupertino tradition to have that in the summer. Yeah, but then if there is an organization that can commit to help with fundraising, that would be great. And I would also like support for a potential five thousand dollar for mental health for teens. I think there has been a recent article, but many articles, that mental health for teens is the biggest challenge they are facing right now. We, and we know that Bobatino would be stopped because it's not effective. Many people agree with that, but we do need an effective program. And most of the teen commissions who interview do agree that's the biggest issue. So, we still allocate that five thousand dollar funding and refer to teen commission to figure out a program for, to continue our mental health support. And then for festival fees, and I feel there is a big inequity. There is a lot of support, but then some festivals get maybe ten times more than the other festivals. I would like to see maybe an effort to cap a max for each organization, so that way I'm more equitable. And I definitely enjoy all the festivals. We don't want these fees to be a barrier to bring festival to Cupertino. However, I see that, thank you for the staff, for, for the, for the amazing questions to our answer, amazing answers to our questions. So, the, the, the city has to hire twelve part-time staff for the, for the Toyokawa Festival. That's a lot. But then if there could be a way to work out so that more volunteer could be used versus part-time staff, if the festivals maybe can work with the city to somehow reduce the cost, because the sheriff's cost is not a waiver, it's an actual cost to the city. Part-time staff is not a waiver, it's an actual cost to the city. Fee waiver, I can support that, but if it's an actual cost, when we are cutting other teen and other, other program, then we are cutting programs to fam, to families. Then, I hope that festival, especially the fundraising ones, they are bringing in revenue. So, is there a way for them to work with the city to reduce the cost? That I would still want to see. So, I think I would propose we reduce the cost for now, and then they can come back if there is really difficulty, and the city can work with them, we can always adjust the budget later. Another thing I have to bring up, in, it would be unethical for me to not bring up Historical Society. Ever since I got on the council, I've been supportive of Cupertino Historical Society. They were getting grant of fifteen thousand to twenty thousand from the city based on the community grant program, which they may or may not get. But then, we have put them in a line item since two thousand and nineteen, and the grant has doubled last year to forty thousand, when we did not have this budget crisis, and now we do. I have to ask, should we maybe reduce that to twenty thousand, the historical amount, rather than doubling, especially they don't have a paid staff right now? That's a question for my fellow council member to consider. And I'd like to everyone to look at the staff report, because the staff report has a chart for the number of recruitments and hires for every year. That chart shows there is no staff turnover issue at all. The only issue might be top level, but then we know that from the DOB report, exactly one person got a lower position. So, the staff report from last time also shows the staffing number have been increasing, not reducing. And thanks staff for the confirmation that there are actually thirty-two vacancies. So, my recollection from hearing from staff, I mentioned the thirty-four vacancies were pretty accurate. And thank you for the table on the exact who are they. That gives me more confirmation of, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. And now, we have Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Okay, so this report identifies at least a hundred and fifty-four thousand in new revenues plus a hundred and sixty thousand. So, effectively about three hundred thousand in new monies. Reduction of services.
Those are reduction in expenditures, not revenue.
Reduction of expenditures and addition of revenues, right?
So, the gas tax, that is additional revenue in the transportation.
No, I wasn't looking at the gas tax. I was looking at the, the unfunded.
Yeah, that's not a revenue, but that's a reduction in expenses.
Okay, okay. Regardless, our expenditures have, so, if you look at it in a sort of simplistic way, we have about three hundred thousand more than we had two weeks ago. Or we have three hundred less expenditures.
I think I may understand, I'm going to try to explain it, and hopefully this helps and doesn't hurt. So, when we talk about reducing expenses by about three hundred thousand, effectively what that does is that saves us from having to use three hundred thousand in fund balance that we otherwise, when we previously presented this budget, had planned to use. If we were to bring in additional revenue in the general fund as well, that would then further reduce the need to use unassigned fund balance. Does that, does that help or hurt?
No, no, it helps, yeah. So, my thinking was, since we have three hundred thousand or so less in expenditures, if we add a couple of items, like the, the sheriff's costs or the mental services, we would still come out ahead compared to where we were two weeks ago.
That's correct.
So, that's my comment for now.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Moore, please.
I just want to bring up some of our grant funds and other funds that we are giving to the community, just so that we haven't, that we're all on the same page about how much we're actually contributing in no particular order. I, I didn't really get a, a sense of how much was given away with regards to some of this senior center programming. I believe there's about. there's about $4,000 for a multi-year bingo room use at the senior center. But there are some other programs, like the senior volunteer appreciation, that I've been asking for some more data on. And that's simply for transparency's sake, so that we all have a better idea. We have community funding grants, which go through a process through the Parks and Rec Commission and then to the council. And so that's 32.30, well, 32,500, I believe I've got that right. Okay. And now with the chamber, I'm looking at the festival fee waiver chart. So it was just a few minutes ago voted on that they would receive the 52,000. And then there's from the festival fee waivers for Diwali, it's about 15,000. And then for Holy, you've got 5.5. So I've got them at 72,500 approximately. The CHS, the Cupertino Historical Society, yes, I worked on the subcommittee with Mayor Way regarding this agreement. And yes, it is at 40,000 per year now for CHS. And then moving to Sister Cities, that one's interesting, because there is a budget item within city council for Sister Cities, and that amount is for staffing, and it's 73,000 in the budget book. And then on the festival fee waiver page, we have 43,000 budgeted total for Cherry Blossom, 16,400 for Bubeneswar, Sister City, and then roughly, I'm going to lowball the travel at 5,000. So I'm coming up with 137,000 for the Sister Cities. And there's a, it seems like there's kind of an imbalance between how active each one of the Sister Cities is. So there's, so that's why you've got the 43,000 for one, for the two-day festival, versus the Bubeneswar at only 16,400. And then on top of that, there's 18 free room uses and perhaps a few extra funds. So it could go to 140,000 there. So there is a little bit of an imbalance between the Sister Cities funding versus all of the others. So if we're going to put them all in order, Sister Cities total, we'll say 140,000, Chamber at number two at 72,500, CHS at 40,000, Cupertino Historical Society, and the community funding grants at 32,500. Does that sound like I've got it straight? Does that sound about right? And then there's some others, you know, some other, like the Day and Night Fun Festival at 17,500, Veterans' Day, 3,500, the Egg Hunt at 1600, and Dilly Hot. By the way, who does run Dilly Hot? I'm not familiar with that. That's not a Sister City. That's just an organization that keeps applying to have a festival?
I'm going to defer the question on the festival to Director Sanders.
Okay. I've attended it. I just don't know the organization. And then I guess we are going to have Relay for Life happen again at 1700.
So according to the spreadsheet, Dilly Hot is run by NACT, which is a nonprofit, and they do, any nonprofit can apply. And so, yes, they have continued to apply for funding for their festival.
Okay, thank you. Just with regards to the festivals, I hope that we reinstate the A Subcommittee to go on the, to work on the festival fee waivers. We were set up to do that last year, and I think it would help to have a process moving forward to rank the requests. And yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Have a question. So the festival fee waiver, have we ever rejected a request? It seems we, I only know about the ones that's approved.
Through the mayor, I can answer that. I believe so, yes. There are qualification and criteria for considering a fee waiver. So I believe Director Sanders has been informing that in the past that we have rejected applications.
So what kind of festivals do we reject?
There are criteria for the application to qualify. It's not the event that we object, it's the criteria that didn't qualify.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. If there are no council comments on the floor, and I'd like to entertain a motion.
The Bungie Jump, the Jump House, I wonder how much that costs?
That comes a member phone.
Yes, so for Director Alfaro, just for the sake of clarity, if we wanted to amend the operating budget resolution in order to provide funding for Shakespeare in the Park in 2024, what verbiage would you suggest to us?
You would need to add additional funding of $30,000 for Shakespeare in the Park.
Okay, since there are no more questions, I really would like, oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor Mohan.
A quick question. Councilmember Chow talked about $5,000 for mental health counseling. Is that the same as the?
Not exactly counseling.
Oh, okay.
So Bobatino was an event started by teen commission to address the teen mental health issue, but it hasn't been effective in doing that. I would suggest that's keep that level of funding, but refer it back to teen commission to find a new way that might be more effective to address that issue. It might not be Bobatino, but some other program.
You're proposing a whole new program?
I don't know what program, but I think I would task the teen commission, since they were the one that came up with Bobatino.
So my question is for Rochelle. Sorry, Rochelle, you just might have to stay here. Or for Christina, this budget is still just a proposed budget. We will have a first quarter adjustment report. So is that?
So this budget is the proposed, oh, sorry, is the proposed budget until hopefully you adopt it this evening in some form, then it becomes the final budget. However, that's probably not the best name for it, because it's literally the legal budget. And then what happens is through council staff reports or through the quarterly financial reports, we will come and make amendments. And so we're always amending the budget. We're presenting, what is the amended budget as of a specific date when we come back to council. So as we know more information or other things pop up, we come back and either say, you know, we need more money, we have more revenue, or maybe we need less money, depending on...
So it is a proposed final budget with a fluid implementation along the way. So my question for Rochelle is, you are the liaison for our teen commissioners. If they do come up with something different that's going to cost a couple thousand dollars, you will let, you can let the council know. So my intention, my preference is not to allocate any amount that we don't even know what's that going to be for. But in the future, when there is a need, the council can always adjust the budget and do that. Is that a fair statement to say?
Yes, that's correct. And I will mention that we were directed through the city work program a couple of years ago to work on mental health items. So there are other events that we do work on, and we work with both the youth activity board and the teen commission to come up with the most interesting and most needed items and events for the teens.
And so if you do need extra budget, you could come back and ask the council for it. So what I'm trying to say is, the specific proposal that I would really love is to fund Shakespeare in the Park, to make sure it goes, year goes on, and fund the festival, not to cut them, the 36,492. So that would be my proposal for my council. So any additional money, I think it's fluid, we can always adjust, as Christina said, when the need comes, we can really consider it. Okay, thank you. If I don't see any lights, I think I really would like to entertain a motion. Maybe I'll start a motion if nobody has any. So I would like to motion accepting the proposed budget with two edits. One is add back the $30,000 for Shakespeare in the Park to keep that money. And like I said, if they fundraise, we have money left, that's fine. Just add back the $30,000 and also add back the 36,492 for all the festivals. And the rest is as recommended. That would be my motion. I'm looking for a second and then discussion.
So Mayor Way, I think you intended for that to also include striking item I?
Oh, yes. Yes, striking item I.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and second. I'm open for discussions. Friendly amendment, substitute motion?
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure, please.
About the mental health services. Have we cut back on any services for mental health?
Through the mayor, I'll answer that. No, that is not being proposed. So the only program that has been eliminated is the Bobatino event, which is the-
So that's a one-day event?
That is a one-day event, which is to promote additional mental health. As Director Sanders mentioned, that these services has been offered through other programs.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so I did some further reordering of the grants and waivers that we have. And what that actually yielded up is that our highest recipient is the Chamber. If I take the 73,000 for, sorry, 73,000 for the Sister Cities, and I divide it among the four, even with the 43,000 for the festival fee waiver, the Chamber ends up being our highest recipient of city funds now. And I don't know if that's where we want to be. I kind of take issue with it, because we're trying to do things that are for the wider community, and that particular, those particular festivals are fundraisers for the Chamber. So I have some concern about that, since we have just essentially secured them probably a five-year contract for 52,000 per year on top of it. So I wanted to get that out there. There was something I mentioned in the previous budget meeting, and that's with regards to the sheriff's donation. So the city received, starting 2018, a donation for sheriffs to serve on the beat at the Apple headquarters. And we, in that particular meeting, staff said that that item would come back and that the city council would be discussing it in future years. I did pull up an article from the Mercury News, and it was from January 12, 2021. And it was a little concerning, because it said, and this was regarding some of the permits, but it said testimony by Apple finance managers indicated that they did not know that such a program existed, and they're referring to something else. And it presumed it was associated with the allocation of two dedicated deputies around Apple Park, a proposal that was discussed around the same time Moyer and Mueller pushed for CCW permits.
Councilmember Moore, may I interrupt just a little bit? Can we, if you want to do an agenda, I can review. This is not in the proposed budget?
It is. It's under miscellaneous.
Okay.
Yep. It falls under the budget, under law enforcement. It's labeled miscellaneous. Yeah, it's, yep, it's in here. It's called miscellaneous. They don't call it out for what it miscellaneous means, but it's in reference to the first donation, which happened September 18, 2018. And that was, and I'll finish this quote from the paper, that they pushed for CCW permits and was later funded by a 558,969 donation to Cupertino. Those same managers also scrutinized this deputy arrangement, in part because it was paid through a city donation avenue, but by their own accounting classifications was a business expense. So my concern is that we've been accepting a donation. We were not being very transparent. It's listed as miscellaneous in our budget. I'm concerned, you know, is this really a donation? The contract was not amended to reflect these increases each year. It started off at 500,000, and over 500,000, and now we're over a million dollars. And we are supposed to have been having these discussions about whether or not we still think it's appropriate to have these sheriff's deputies assigned this way. And because I can't find a contract, what that means is that somehow these sheriffs are being assigned verbally.
So we are discussing a motion and a second. So if you want to make a friendly amendment or a substitute motion, please do, because we're going to this big discussion without a purpose.
Okay, friendly amendment. And I had asked for this, that the budget would actually reflect that miscellaneous means revenue that is expected from Apple, and that they, their expectation, because if you read the donation form, is that they will have the reciprocity of having these sheriffs assigned to their property, and that we should be clear with that. And-
I would respectfully ask you to state your friendly amendment, please.
That's it, that we put that item in the budget, so that it's clear that that's what it's for.
And that is item number miscellaneous, or can you point the page?
That miscellaneous is correctly listed as a donation from Apple for sheriffs to be assigned to their headquarters beat.
So exactly what is your friendly amendment, please?
That's it.
To delete that item?
No, no, to describe in the budget, when it gets printed, exactly what that million-dollar miscellaneous amount is for. That it's not going to say just miscellaneous, it's going to say that it's a, it's a little over a million, donation from Apple for the two sheriff's deputies who are assigned. And then it would be great if it could be-
Do you have a language, how to describe, because we're passing a budget right now, it's going to come at that.
I think, I think the-
So through the mayor, if I may, I believe the Councilmember Moore is proposing should be better addressed in the sheriff's contract, which will come to council's consideration next year. So this exercise is not documented in the current contract with the sheriff right now. The budget is not the best place to reflect. It's not a donation, and it's not the best way to reflect the transaction through this exercise.
Pardon. If you give me a minute, I'll pull up the donation form from Apple, and we can look at it.
That's okay. We have a friendly amendment, and I'm going to ask the motion, I'm the one who makes the motion, and Councilmember, who seconded, I totally forgot. Vice Mayor Mohan seconded. So would you accept the friendly amendment?
No.
I wouldn't either. I think it complicates the process, and I agree with the manager, it needs to be discussed in our sheriff's department. It doesn't change the budget anyway. So it's just a description. I think we can talk about it during our sheriff's contract.
Right. So the upcoming sheriff's contract would be a better avenue to discuss what Councilmember Moore has in mind.
Because one clarification is, I don't think her friendly amendment changes the budget. She just wanted description of it.
That is correct.
Okay. So if it doesn't change the budget, I think that could wait until we get into the sheriff's contract. So I am not accepting the friendly amendment. Do you have a motion and a second, if there are no more discussions? Councilmember Foo?
Question to Director Alfaro, since this change would potentially impact how you're moving money around, would you also need direction from us on Resolution 23070?
Yes, we would also need to update the resolution to reflect the additional items.
Okay. Would it be sufficient to simply authorize you to take any necessary limit adjustments to facilitate the amendment of Resolution Number 23068?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure. The council would authorize you to take any necessary limit adjustments to facilitate the amendment of Resolution Number 23-068 through the amendment of Resolution Number 23-070.
So I think, yes, for the 23068, but it should not impact the Resolution 23070 establishing the appropriation. establishing the appropriation limit. So it would just be for 23068.
Okay.
Is that a friendly amendment? Councilmember Froom, can you repeat that?
It sounds like what I am curious about is not necessary.
Oh, okay, thank you. So if there's no discussions, I let, councilmember Chow, please?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a substitute motion. Let me share my screen. I know I might not have the majority support, but then I would like to try. Clears my conscience that I tried. So first, I do support the $30,000 to support the commitment for 2024 Shakespeare in the Park, provided that there is a commitment for fundraising for next year. So the total funding level would be lower. And then I would still like the commitment in the budget for a teen mental health program, especially we have also removed the teen center. We can always adjust the budget. That's not an excuse to not budget the item to be referred to the teen commission to come up with a replacement of Bobatino. It shows the council's commitment to supporting health. And then third, continue facility fee waiver for all festivals, but separate the cost for the city, such as sheriff and the part-time staffing, because these are real cost to the city. And I'd like to cap the total amount for each organization of the cost to be more equitable and inclusive. Set the cap to be two times the current average cost. And not including facility fee waivers per organization. And then therefore that means, this is a subitem under that one, that means keep the reduction of, for now, since I don't know what's the total cost, for now, today, keep the reduction of the 42, 40-something for sheriff fees and keep the reduction on item I, which was for mostly staffing and other fee waivers. Hold on to it. Let's make adjustment in Q1 if necessary. So we allocate, provide the other fee cost sharing. The other is more like cost sharing. Let's do the cost sharing, figure out the more equitable formula in the future. And then this is again, I have to propose that because I feel I'm responsible for doubling the amount the city pays for one organization when we are halving the amount for all the other organizations in community grant. And I have been very supportive of this Cupertino society. So I have to be asking for, consider reducing the funding for Cupertino Historical Society to the previous level of $20,000. And the staff can figure out the implementation detail later.
Thank you so much, councilmember Chow. We have a substitute motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I, if you would, please put it back on the screen, councilmember Chow. Thank you. I'll second it, but I do take issue with a number of the suggestions. And I think, you know, if I were to go for something kind of like a bigger line item, I would say to return the maintenance irrigation and landscaping of the nine CUSD schools back to CUSD because the field use fees aren't covering the cost to the field users. Yes, that would be a friendly amendment.
Please, state your friendly amendment, please.
That return the maintenance irrigation and landscaping of the nine CUSD schools back to CUSD because the field use fees are not covering the costs.
So I would just note that we are under contractual obligations to CUSD to perform that maintenance. And so any ability to transfer those costs would be contingent on renegotiating those contracts.
So our request would be to look into renegotiating the contracts on the CUSD fields?
I think that would be a separate agenda item, but I guess that's a potential request.
Okay, now the other-
I would support a future agenda item to look into.
We are doing a friendly amendment now. Let's do a agenda item later.
Okay. And then I take, I'm concerned about reducing the funding for CHS. And when I look at the, so that part, I'm unable to support. I do understand the reduction of the sheriff, the fee for the festivals.
Councilmember Moore, I'm looking for a second or friendly amendment, not discussion because we all have, we're waiting for that, please.
So then I would amend the reduction and change that so that we're going to keep the $40,000 for the Historical Society. Instead of reducing the sheriff fees, we would, because we just we just agreed to providing $52,000 per year from the Chamber, that we remove the $19,000 in total costs for their festival fee fundraisers. So we, they get to, they'll retain the $52,000, but we'll remove the $19,000 for their festival fees. And then for the remainder of the festivals, they would continue to have the recreation, facility park, road permits, public works, sheriff materials, costs covered. So we would just eliminate those, that one. So I would not, I wouldn't reduce the sheriffs at the festivals. I would merely suggest that we remove the two Chamber of Commerce festivals because they are receiving other funding already. And they're, right now, they're higher than everyone because of the changes that we made.
Councilmember Chow, did you get the friendly amendment? Are you typing the friendly amendment?
And I do, I agree with Shakespeare in the Park and with the teen mental health program. I know there was a request to have the teen center kept open.
I would like you to do the friendly amendment before the comment because I think you're making too many, will need to be equitable in main comments too. So make the friendly amendment, please.
So councilmember Chow, I don't know if you'll accept the friendly amendment to keep the sheriff's fees for all, but remove the festival fee waivers on the two-chamber events because we are providing $52,000 for the Chamber now with a multi-year contract. And they'll be receiving a lot of mutual benefits from that.
So you are saying to keep, the city keep paying the sheriff fees for the other festivals?
Yes.
And just not funding the two-chamber ones?
No, we're no longer going to waive the fees, the total fees for the Chamber for their events because instead, we've provided $52,000 in an annual contract for them.
What's friendly amendment, councilmember Chow? Do you accept it?
So separate the, but then you still want to support the sheriff fees. That means the city would keep paying sheriff fees for, just keep paying all the fees for the other festivals. The only, the only festival that would be affected would be the two-chamber ones. So we are not subsidizing one organization too much.
Right, trying to balance them out.
But among all these festivals, there are still some festivals that receive maybe like 10 times more. So you don't-
All right, so you would like to, you would like to remove all the sheriffs from all. So let's do that.
I don't know. I just want to say, set a cap of two times of the current average. I don't know how that's accurate, how that's done.
I respectfully would like you guys to decide whether you're going to accept it or not.
Proposal for consideration. So we can consider how to be more equitable in supporting festivals. But then provided we, this does not become a barrier for the festivals. Provided we work with the city to reduce the cost.
I must apologize. We are turning into this meeting into a two-council discussion. Can you whether accept her amendment or not? If you don't, you can do another friendly amendment. I think we need to follow procedures instead of having a discussion right here with two councilmembers.
Because I'm not clear what's the amendment.
Then you don't accept it and propose your own amendment or new substitute motion. I don't like to turn this into a two-council discussion. I'm trying to be respectfully of our time.
Through the mayor, if I could clarify, do you, councilmember Chow, do you have a difficulty with the sheriff fee being waived in general? And if you have a compelling reason, I will simply change my friendly amendment and say let's remove the sheriff's fees that are, to simplify.
As a chair, I need to intervene. This cannot be a two-council negotiation right now. I would like to friendly amendment, accept it or not, don't accept it, do another amendment or substitute motion. Let's keep it not a discussion because none of the three of us are not in the discussion. So I'm just being respectful. I hope this is not a two-council.
But I'm not clear how I can write it.
And do yours.
I'd like to accept it, but I'm not clear. That's why I'm trying to write down. I'm asking the question so I know how to word it.
Do you get a friendly amendment? Maybe we should ask Kirsten to write down the friendly amendment. Councilmember Moore had a friendly amendment.
Do you have a write-up?
Yes. From my understanding, so initially, there is renegotiation of contracts for the CUSD field use. And then additionally, there's amending reductions as noted to strike through the Historical Society. But I was kind of lost after that point.
Okay, so because the Chamber ended up, through all of this, ended up being the highest, my proposal is that we would remove the festival fee waivers from the Chamber to balance out our grants essentially. And so the Chamber would stay with the $52,000 and the, essentially a five-year contract. So remove the Chamber from the festival fee waivers. And then my original concept is that we would still, for everyone else, provide the total amount, including the sheriffs, for their festival fee waivers. Remove the fee waivers for, yes, remove the entire festival fee waivers for the Chamber events based on the, as I've said, based on the fact that we already have a contract with them.
Okay, so Kirsten, do you think you've got the friendly amendment?
I do have that, yes.
Okay, so councilmember Chow, do you accept the friendly amendment? And I think we have sort of know the friendly amendment. I think I got idea of it.
So this is my understanding.
Let's open for discussion. Any discussions from councilmembers?
So this is amended motion.
Do you accept it?
Right, okay, I accept that.
Okay, so now we have a substitute motion with a friendly amendment. I'd like to open up for discussions.
Sorry, this is amended.
I would like to put my very short opinion in this. I think we're making things very complicated in a very, I know we have budget deficit, but we're talking about not a lot of money. And as for equitable, it really depends on how much effort each organization puts in. For example, Cherry Blossom is a two-day event. That's why they are much more expensive than the others' one-day event. And I don't call that inequitable. I call that serving our residents in a multiple way. And Chamber's contract is separate from this festival thing. I do not like to commingle things that's different, have different meaning out of it. The Chamber contract doesn't include hosting the two festivals for free or, you know, they're in charge of it. So I view equitable as providing services in different ways, not which, how much money each organization receives. So I would not be voting for the substitute motion with the friendly amendment. I'm open for other council input, else we can have a vote. If no more, councilmember Froom?
I will simply echo everything that you have said. Every time that we make something considerably more complicated for no particularly good reason, I think it just unfortunately wastes all of our time.
So we have a substitute motion and with a friendly amendment. I'd like to put up a vote, please, unless councilmember Moore, you have very short time, please.
Yes, there are a couple of comments I want to make before we go into the voting. The special projects have a may statement in them where old special projects may show up and be worked on rather than having the projects listed and their costs shown. That's on page 44. That concerns me about how our budget can possibly be balanced with those projects. And the city, in my opinion, should not be bringing an 80,000-square-foot city hall back to city council when staff has been cut and most only have to show up 50% of the time. We need less space now. And I'm concerned about the $1 million citywide building assessment.
I really like to run this on the substitute motion and friendly amendment because you're making another friendly amendment or?
No, I'm making some statements. Thank you.
Okay, so as a chair, I really want to run it our time. As councilmember Froom said, our time is very precious, our staff and our residents' time. We have other items to go forward. So I would like to restrain our comments. That's not on the things we're going to talk about. So right now, I'd like to have a vote on the substitute motion with a friendly amendment. Let's vote by light, please.
The substitute motion as amended fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So I am going to move forward to the original motion with a second. And if there's no discussions, I'd like to have a vote by lights, please.
Very quickly, I've made my comments regarding the budget. So I hope that my vote makes sense. Thank you.
The main motion carry, as, let's see, is that amended? The, ways main motion as amended carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
At this moment, we have exceeded our council agenda for the 10:30, our procedures manual for the 10:30 time. We have three items we need to talk about. Item consent number two, consent number five, and consent number 10.
Correct.
And I do think consent number 10 has a little sensitive, time-sensitive matter to it. So I'd like to ask my fellow councilmembers, can we extend it for another 30 minutes?
I should clarify that council's consideration of consent item number 10 is entirely optional.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure that it is time-sensitive.
Well, I would still like, because my reasons, we have a heavy agenda next time too. And we have, so if, my preference, if we can get through one more item, it would be great. So I would like to propose we extend it for another 30 minutes to finish item number 10.
Are you sure it's item number 10 that you are wanting? I don't think that's the one that you're looking for.
It is item number 10. It's the comprehensive annual report.
So-
Yeah, I think it is item number five that you were looking for.
It's two and five and 10. Three of them we haven't been looking for. So I was told that number 10 is the most time-sensitive one.
Consideration of 10 is optional.
Five?
Five, five obviously does have to be approved by council at some point because it's a contract that exceeds the city manager's purchasing authority.
So I'm going to pull a straw vote. Do we want to, I would like to finish one more item so we don't have to put this on next agenda, either five or 10. And I'd like to, city manager and city attorney to advise at least me, which one is more time-sensitive?
If, okay, so switch of course. If council has desired to take care of one more item, we do have the IT director online for item number five on Zoom for any questions. Item number 10, the comprehensive annual report has come to council once. We would love to continue sending this off to the next agency. So if council can, do they need to come back again then?
It's optional. I mean, if council wants to talk about it, they can, but there's nothing to approve.
Understand. Okay, so I would like to propose to extra vote to do one more item, number five, and put another 30 minutes- and put another 30 minutes into it. Do we have a vote? Second?
I'll second.
So, can we have a-
Question, so does that mean item two and 10 will be continued and will be scheduled for next meeting? Rather than dropped, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because the number 10 could be dropped. And I think the, some community member really wants to talk about it.
So, your attorney, you can kind of explain it a little bit better?
Yeah, absent, absent action, further action by council, they would be, they would be agendized for the next meeting, next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, can we have a vote, please, to extend the time of 30 minutes and do work on number five?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and I assume nobody needs a couple of minutes break? You do? Okay, let's take a really quick break. Five minutes maximum, hopefully you can come back 30 minutes, three minutes. Here we are, so we are, resume the meeting for item number five. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a third amendment to professional services agreement with Cortic Solutions LLC for software updates and technical support services, increasing the current contract amount by 184,800 over the next three years, for a total contract amount of 354,800. And do we have a staff report?
Through the mayor, we do not have a staff report, but we did receive a number of questions from Councilmember Moore this afternoon, which we have not had a chance to provide a response to council. Though I do have Bill Mitchell and Terry Garhart to provide you an overview of those questions answered. Bill or Terry, go take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am Terry Garhart, the Innovation Technology Manager. And I don't have presentation, but I'm here to answer your questions.
Okay, so council, you have five minutes to ask questions, may I have, maybe Councilmember Moore?
All right, since I pulled this, so I was just looking at the item earlier and looked at the first contract that we have, the first amendment and the second amendment. And then I also noticed there is a purchase order for $27,922. And then I was kind of thinking about the staff report, and the staff report made it look to me like we had just started contracting with GIS in November 2021. And so, I, I went to resolutions, which is where you can look up accounts payable. I typed in Cortic and saw that we had been doing work with them for a number of years, going back to, and this is in the written communications, going back to 2009. And we've paid them approximately $439,000. So, I couldn't find a contract for that timeframe leading up to November. So, I was wondering why I couldn't find that. And then, just for understanding, we had the purchase order happen on the same day as the contract amendment, and I was wondering how those two interplay. And then, I had a general question more probably for finance regarding the purchasing policy requirements. Because this is a multi-year contract, I believe it is the 175,000 I've seen sometimes, sometimes I see 200,000. I think we have some, a little, I have some confusion over if it's 175,000 that triggers it to come to council for approval, or 200. But my concern there was because this contract starts, this, this work on the GIS system seemed to have started in 2009, we had a, we've totaled 439,000 that we actually exceeded even the $200,000 mark several years ago. And that makes me think that maybe this needed to come to council earlier because of that. So, I was wondering if, you know, if this, if you want to continue this item and bring back the other contracts to provide some clarity, that would be great. Or if someone knows the answers right now, that's, that's also good too. But I think maybe it needs to be continued.
So, let me try to address those questions. So, Cortic provides technical support for our entire GIS architecture, including City Works, which is our asset management application. Initially, work was performed, simply performed under a purchase order agreement consistent with our prior legal advice. In November of 2021, the city and Cortic signed the first professional services agreement contract based on advice from the city's attorney's office. So, as far as the purchase order, so it is common for, common practice for the IT department to generate a purchase order on the same day as an agreement is signed. And then regarding the multi-year contract, so in 2021, based on new advice from the city attorney's office, there was a revision in IT's understanding of purchasing policy requirements. The focus shifted from an annual spending per vendor to tracking the aggregate spending across years for a particular vendor, providing a more comprehensive view of spending patterns and enhancing financial oversight. Since then, the IT department has diligently ensured that all contracts comply with this revised interpretation. The department has since structured and managed contracts to align with the requirements of tracking aggregate spending, promoting transparency and compliance with the updated policy.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, and I just, thank you, Terry, I just, I want to just clarify that, you know, the purchasing policy is both silent as to how to, to treat these recurring multi-year contracts, and also as to, you know, when purchases just with a purchasing order and no professional services of agreement of this sort are proper. So, that was a legal interpretation by the city attorney's office that changed. And that, that explains why the IT department's procurement procedure changed.
Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the city attorney to be proactive in trying to improve the purchasing policy in our department, and-
Now, we have, and we have a purchasing manager on board who's going to be working on, hopefully, a much better purchasing policy that-
Yeah, and tracking aggregated spending is really, thank you for doing that. And thank the IT department for doing, making all your effort to comply. But I'm afraid I won't remember the answer, the answer was really good. So, is it possible that we get a written explanation? And if you can point me to the policies, that would be great, thank you.
Through the mayor, we'll provide a written responses to council members' questions this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions, I'd like to open up a public comment. Do we have anyone here? I don't see anyone here, but maybe online.
Mayor, I see no, I see no, no hands raised on Zoom, and I see no speaker cards.
Okay, so I will close the public comment, bring it back to council for discussion. If there's no more discussions, I'd like to, somebody make a motion, Councilmember Moore?
I have a question, so what actually triggered this item coming to council?
So, so again, this is not explicit in the purchasing policy, it's not addressed. But the interpretation the city attorney's office has provided, that once the agreement crossed the threshold of $175,000, it was mandated to return to council. There are other circumstances where an agreement could, but that was a clear line that it had to. And so, that, I believe, was the threshold that was crossed here.
Okay, thank you, so could, another, could another interpretation be that, that it needed to come to council when it crossed $175,000 initially? Because like I said, we went, we were at $439,000, so it's, it's actually crossed this line a couple of times.
I mean, that's a conceivable interpretation, but we didn't, we didn't have a, this type of professional services agreement executed until 2021. You know, and there's also, I think, it does take some time to sort of catch, to change historical practices that have been in place for a long time. And so, you know, we've been trying to be proactive about implementing these changes going forward. I, I think, you know, we'll probably see more changes when the purchasing policy is amended, but hopefully that will just make things clearer and easier for people to understand, and, and you will be less reliant on these kind of interpretations from the city attorney's office.
Thank you, I want to mention that when I was looking up Cortic, I was just focused on GIS, but there are other services that they provide which might need to have a contract that's associated with them that I couldn't, I could not locate. So, if someone would look into that, that would be appreciated, to see if there, those other services are still continuing on that don't fall under the GIS contract reforming, thank you.
I can address that real quick, so Cortic does only contract with the GIS group. That's their primary, really the only work that they do for the city of Pecatina.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm through the mayor, so that, so I would skip things if they didn't say GIS when I was totaling up, so I probably should not have then. So, all of their work is GIS-related, all of, all of the payments. I believe I'm understanding that correctly.
That's correct.
Thank you, if there are no other questions, I'd like to, or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second, please.
I'll second.
Oh, I-
I'll second.
Oh, okay, I made a motion, I made a motion, that's recommended, yeah. And Vice Mayor Moore has seconded. If there are no discussions, let's vote by light.
The motion carries with more voting no.
All right, thank you. We are going to adjourn, and we are going to move number two and 10 to the next city council meeting.
That's correct, we'll continue. Before you conclude the meeting tonight, we do have a short video for you.
Thank you for reminding me.
Sure.
Always one end on a high note.
Video, can you place, play the video, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Wu, always, you know, give us the good highlights of a lot of city activities. So, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.